A call to order the Shawnee City Commission meeting, January 17th, 2012. Call roll please.
Stevens.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Herod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Larry Sparks from New Beginnings Church, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
The Bible says where there is no vision that people perish, and so I'm thankful for the vision of Shawnee, as we can see the growth, the good things happening, the provisions made, and perhaps we'll begin with gratitude tonight. Father, we thank you for what we look around and see in the midst of a world that is pulled and stretched and has so many needs, in a country that has so many definite needs. We see a blessing and provisions made here in Oklahoma and in Shawnee, and we're thankful for the progress. We are thankful for the flag, and we're thankful for yesterday that was set aside to honor Dr. Martin Luther King, and for he had a vision, he had a dream, and much of that has been fulfilled, much is yet to come. We're also thankful for Pat Snyder and this recognition she'll receive tonight. She certainly deserves it, and we ask, Father, that you will bless the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission. We ask that you will bless the ones who are a part of the police department and the fire department, and in fact, Lord, each one of the employees here at the city of Shawnee that work in every facet and every facility. We thank you for them. Now bless this meeting this evening. May it accomplish that for which it was designed, and we in a sense just lay our hands on the agenda, and we dedicate it to you, and again with all gratitude, all gratitude for what you have done. Before we pray the close of this, we know we're going to salute the flag, we once again press our military, so many of our Oklahoma sons and daughters there on the foreign soil fighting for freedom. We just press them to your heart right now, believing you'll take care of them, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and its fidelity for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Sparks. Item number one, consider approval of agenda.
So moved.
All right. A motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Herod and second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll please.
Herod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, citizens' participation.
Evening. My name is Dana Holden, and my wife and I have just opened a business here in Shawnee, purchased a home, and the problem I'm having is that at our home, our water bill's been running close to $500 a month. I've been in contact with employees from code enforcement, water line maintenance, city manager's office, city engineer's office, and the information I get is sue the city. And I think it's kind of sad that employees of the city are telling me to sue the city when I'm trying to work this out. The problem with my water line is my water meter sits in somebody else's front yard, and so in order for me to repair my water line, wherever the break is, I've had a plumber out, and I have an estimate on that. For me to repair that, I would have to dig up the driveway, driveway of one of my neighbors, and then have a backhoe go through two of my neighbor's yards, through their backyard, and then over to my property. It's my understanding from one of the employees from the line maintenance is that when that water line was put in years ago, prior to that neighborhood being built, they were supposed to have that water line moved where it would be accessible if, if there was a break, and that wasn't done. And so consequently, I have no authority to go onto anybody else's property to dig it up, to repair my water line, and I can't get the city to help me on that either. I called the city manager's office to get an appointment with him. He had his secretary call me, and again I was told file a tort claim against the city. If that doesn't work, then I have to sue the city in county court. The only people who are going to profit from that are the attorneys. It would cost more to fight this than it would probably be to move the water line, and I'm trying to be a good citizen. We've opened a business here, we've purchased property here, and you know, I'm just looking for help. I can't afford to keep paying $500 a month for a water bill. We moved here in May, and now since that time, I've paid well over $1,000 for water. So this is my last step before I have to go to an attorney, and I don't want to have to do that. I want to try to work this out.
What's your address, Mr. Holden?
1101 West 45th.
This is only citizens' participation, and we cannot make a decision.
I understand.
Or discuss that at this time.
Would it be possible for me to get an appointment with somebody that can make a decision?
We can certainly direct staff to get back in touch with you and set up an appointment so that we can find out what's going on.
Okay. I would appreciate that very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Called your office, but I'll call them again.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Rocky Barrett. I'm tribal chairman of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation and a resident, a lifelong resident of the city of Shawnee, and I want to congratulate the city of Shawnee on apparently working out what has been a long and difficult and very thorny legal problem that Indian tribes have faced for decades, and apparently it appears that a piece of land held in trust by the United States government is going to be annexed into the city, and city employees, police and water employees are going to be able to operate outside of the state on a piece of land without, apparently without the protections under the tort claims protections act, federal tort claims protections act. If state law is going to apply there, that would take a considerable amount of number of waivers of an application of state law. The way it stood before when we asked for cross-deputization agreement with the city, which we have talked about now for 30 years, and I'm familiar with it, of course those agreements between tribes and cities and tribes and counties all require approval by the Joint Committee on State Tribal Relations and a compact signed by the governor. So my assumption is in absent that, in order to protect the officers and employees of the city, they will have to become employees of the Kikapu tribe in order to have tort claims protection act. And that was always the problem when we offered to do cross-deputizations was that the police union did not want the officers of the tribe to have police powers within the city. So apparently that has been worked out to the city's satisfaction, and we look forward to that. However, there is an issue, I'm on the board of directors of Rural Water District Number Three, that have been awarded an annexation privilege for sales of water in that area and are laying line as we speak. If an annexation by an entity of the state is valid in that area, then the annexation by the county of the Rural Water District Number Three's sales exclusivity would be binding. So that's an issue I haven't exactly worked out, but I am heartened that you guys have worked out how to do the cross-deputization issue without a compact with the state, and I look forward to hearing how you're going to do that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Are you going to talk about the annexation? That's what we can talk about. Should I go up now?
No hearings.
If you step it in the public hearing.
It needs to have right now, doesn't it?
Well, we haven't called it yet. Item six.
We will be reconvening a public hearing, and you can speak then.
Then I'll talk.
Okay.
You can do it now too.
Yeah. Good to do it. Yeah.
I guess this is a time I wanted to, item 11 has to do with doing away with the prohibition on, on double advertising on the private businesses. Is this the time I would address that?
That's item 10. Would be 10.
10, yeah, okay.
That's a public hearing too.
Is that a public hearing?
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll move on to item number four, mayor's proclamation, Pat Snyder Day, January 17th, 2012, and I do have a proclamation here. I know you're a friend of mine, but I'll speak first. This is a proclamation in the city of Shawnee for Pat Snyder Day. Whereas Pat Snyder, a longtime resident of Shawnee and a figure of the local theater community, has become renowned far beyond the confines of this community. And whereas Pat Snyder founded Shawnee Little Theater in 1967, serving as its managing director for 10 years, and is currently the theater's artistic director, she has led productions that received national recognition at the National Play Festival, and has helped the theater achieve recognition by the Oklahoma Community Theater Association as Theater of the Year more than any other community theater in the state. And whereas Pat Snyder's leadership and guidance has helped launch the careers of artists, writers, musicians, filmmakers, and others who now represent Oklahoma in the performing arts industry in venues like Los Angeles, New York City, and Washington DC. And whereas Pat Snyder fostered partnerships with the Oklahoma Office of Juvenile Affairs and the National Youth as Resources to provide incarcerated youth the opportunity to attend performances at the Shawnee Little Theater, participate in set construction, and have productions performed in institutional settings. And whereas Pat Snyder was a longtime educator at Shawnee High School and St. Gregory's University. Whereas Pat Snyder was honored November 15th, 2011 with the Oklahoma Arts Council Community Service Award at the 36th Annual Governors Arts Award Ceremony. And whereas all residents are urged to join in recognizing and honoring this talented and gracious citizen. Now therefore, I Linda Peterson, mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 17th, 2012, as Pat Snyder Day in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma dated the 17th day of January 2012.
Thank you.
You're welcome. (applause) billing clerk, customer service.
A little bit about Teresa. Teresa's been with the city for 13 years. She started out at the expo. I'm not sure what she did at the expo, but that's been a while because I've only known her to work in the billing department. And she has three grandchildren. I did not know that until this evening. Staff write-up for, for, for her award tonight was, it was the first workday of the new month and a new year following a three-day holiday, and Teresa stepped up and filled the position of two additional employees that were unavailable to work, as well as doing her own job. Teresa handled the phones, the water payment window, and the deposit of money. She then worked at night to get her own job done by sending out the new billing for the month. Yes, we like to see the money coming in. She demonstrated super work and a super attitude. Teresa, thank you very much for your service.
Item number six, reconvene public hearing in consideration of an ordinance annexing property located northwest of the intersection of MacArthur Street and Acme Road, just east of Highway 177, applicant Kikapu Tribe of Oklahoma. And this is a continued from the December 19th meeting.
Reopen.
Reopen. Don't need to hit the gamble and reopen.
Reopen the public hearing.
We'll reopen the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this?
May I want to hear from Justin first?
Anything changed? Okay, we'll hear from Justin.
Madam Mayor, commissioners, I was contacted by the Kikapu tribe this afternoon. Their legal counsel is finalizing a annexation agreement or memorandum of understanding that they want to present to the commission that would go with an annexation ordinance should you choose to adopt that in the future. That document's not complete, and, or the first draft is complete, and our legal counsel needs to review it and hammer out some of the details. So certainly there's obviously people in the audience that wish to speak to this tonight. You may wish to take testimony, but the applicant does request deferment until February 6th of your next commission meeting. Thank you.
And I would say that the first draft of the MOU does not include cross-deputization, and I do not anticipate at this time that we will have cross-deputization of police until other issues are worked out, primarily with the union, before we can work anything else out.
Shall we still take, we're still in the public hearing, yes.
The, the Kikapu tribe, that land that's held in trust is of course subject to the statutes of the, of the Kikapu tribe, and in the event that there isn't a cross-deputization agreement, and the city employees must be hired by the Kikapu tribe. Otherwise, I don't believe there is a federal tort claims protection for the employees of the city on that, that land without some form of employment agreement or, or agreement there. On the annexation issue, if the annexation is binding on the city under state law, then what is to come of the annexation by the county commissioners for Rural Water District Number Three? That's, of course, the Rural Water District is laying line from the north right now over behind the Elks Club in that area, so there is a certainty of service there from Rural Water District Number Three. It would be available from them, but of course it's the Kikapu tribe's choice as to who they would purchase water from if, if the sovereign powers of the tribe are recognized there. An annexation by the city in some form of limited manner where, without the consent of the trustee, which would be the United States, and specifically the Bureau of Indian Affairs, which manages the land and trust land affairs of the Kikapu tribe. They have not contracted that, that's the only function I believe that the Bureau functions that they have not contracted or compacted is realty, and so there should be some indication if the annexation provides jurisdiction for the city, there should be some consent on that particular piece of real estate from the trustee of the United States. And I'm, of course, not seeing the agreement, I wouldn't know what, but I think the city should consider what its liability protections are when it leaves the state of Oklahoma and goes on to Indian trust land without cross-deputization agreements or specific contractual agreements. So, thank you.
I have a question or two before I make my statement. What makes trust land? What constitutes it to be Indian trust land?
When, when the title to the land is held in trust by the United States government for the benefit of the tribe.
Okay. Can this, can they buy any land and put it into trust, or is it trust land that was given to them years ago? This property was owned by an individual just a few years ago. I know that for a fact.
It was in fact owned by an individual a few years back. That doesn't prevent it from having become trust land. There's a process.
That means the tribe can buy land and then put it in trust.
Yes ma'am.
Apply for that and put it in trust.
Apply for that, that it has to be accepted. We probably need to let Mr. Barrett get up here. He's the one that knows, has all the experience with it, but in fact, the tribes do buy land, go through a process where there's public comment, and their application to move it into trust may or may not be granted depending upon the circumstances. Generally, it's granted, but not always.
And it has been granted.
As far as I know, in this case, it has been granted.
Also, is the tribe going to be alleviated from taxes on their utilities like the Potawatomi are, or is the city going to benefit by giving them utilities?
City won't give utilities. The city may sell, but the taxes in the.
Yeah, but I mean, are they going to be paying taxes?
They will not, land that is held in trust as a rule does not collect and remit sales tax.
No, I'm talking about taxes on the utilities.
There are no taxes on utilities. There are rates that you pay. If they would pay rates for any utilities they consume, if they use sewer, they'd pay rates. Potawatomi, Citizen Potawatomi pays water and sewer rates as well.
About two years ago, they were waived for 10 years from any, any taxes.
Who was?
I was here. The Potawatomi tribe. I was here at the meeting, and they voted, the council voted to waive, Chuck Mills was mayor, they waived the expense for 10 more years because it comes up every 10 years, and the council approved it. And if you do that for them, are you going to, the people that you annexed on the north side of MacArthur, are they going to get utilities, I mean, surage? Because you told them when you annexed all of us out there, and you did it before you had to give us utilities, I mean, surage, you told them that you would never give them any. So why would you go down the road and give them sewer? Just questions.
Ma'am, commissioners, we have water and sewer that's, that's readily available to that.
Not on the north side?
The, the, if, if we were to supply water and sewer to the tribe, they would have to pay for the installation and extension of those utilities as would any other development in our city.
My understanding is they're only going to go across the street and hook on to the line that the city ran out there for an apartment complex.
Yes ma'am, I mean if it's according to engineering standards, they would have to do just like any other developer would in our community.
Okay, but you're still not going to offer surage on the north side of MacArthur?
I don't know what you're talking about.
And they have a real septic tank problem on that side of the road.
Okay, a couple of things. First, can you tell us your name for the record?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
You don't remember me? I'm Joanne Cox.
But not everyone else, ma'am.
Sorry.
Want to know what property you're talking about?
From St. Gregory's, Acme Road, on the north side of MacArthur. When they annexed by default, it was sort of a shady deal, because they pulled on getting us into the city, which we were opposed, and I would, if you are going to consider this annexation, I would appreciate, I understand that you're going to wait a little bit. I would like to be able to bring in a, what do you call it? When you get everybody to sign?
A petition.
A petition, because I'm sure the people to the north of this location, all that residential up by the, the country club, Elks Club, they're not going to want that right behind them. I do not want the traffic going down my street, and I live on MacArthur. So do you get the idea I'm opposed to it?
Got it.
Because those people that are the west of the country club, just then they're not inside the city anymore.
The Elks is not.
I mean the Elks.
But they are attached to the property, and have they been notified?
To what now?
Have they been notified? Because if you take them into the city, guess who's going to go next?
They're not included in the annexation?
No.
Okay.
But they will be. Okay. Did you get my request that, to give us enough time to notify the people that are involved in this thing out there? We are in the city, and all we have heard is, I just got a little article or something about a week ago, and then I saw it in the paper today, that it's, you know, that you're really seriously considering it.
Jessica, what's the requirements on notifying? How far out close do they have to be and things like that?
Ms. Cox is referring to, previously state law was much more, it was much easier to annex and annex territory to people than petition, but now the only property that's included in this annexation is the tribal property that specifically petitioned the city, so there's no additional property. So, and the notice requirements are those found in state law and in our ordinance just requires that we leave a notice in the paper. And as Ms. Cox mentioned, there's been several, two articles in the paper.
Okay.
So what are we saying? Would you consider if I bring petitions in, would it have any effect on any of you?
It depends on whether or not we, we vote to defer it to the next meeting. I mean, I can't, we haven't had a motion to do that yet.
Okay. There are six casinos within 15 minutes of my house. I don't think we need another.
You hear that? Thank you.
What you need to understand is it takes a bill to whether we're in or not.
First, I'd like to address the issue of exemption from taxes for the tribe. First, I'd like to address the issue of exemption from taxes of the tribe. What, what she is mistaken about is that the franchise tax that is paid by OGN E to the city for the use of its rights of way distributed electricity is recouped by OGN E by billing its customers. The rights of way of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation, of course, are not in the city, they're in the Citizen Potawatomi Nation. So, we were, that exemption was recognized by the city that we did not have to pay the franchise taxes, and OGN E stopped paying you, and that we stopped paying OGN E. So, that issue really wasn't an exemption from taxes. It was basically that the reimbursement that was required was no longer necessary. On the ownership of that piece of property, that, if I'm not mistaken, that property has been in the Wapapaw family since, was in ownership by the Wapapaw family since eighteen So, I, I think that has been in continuous ownership of that family, and it went trust-to-trust transfer from the Wapapaw family to the Kekku Nation fairly recently. So, it, I, I don't believe it has ever been out of trust, to my knowledge, as is that piece that, where the pond, the learning pond is in that area, straight west of the Expo Center, is all the Wapapaw family allotment there. So, I, I don't believe this piece was ever out of trust and went back in. And the, some pieces of, of, of land in the city of Shawnee have mistakenly been called trust property, where the tribe took it into trust for the United States without the United States' knowledge or consent. And that's where these smoke shops, behind Walgreens and over on Kekku Street, those illegal smoke shops, that's how they're operating, is in a bogus trust document.
Thank you. Anyone else? Justin, can I ask you to come up for some clarification, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, before you start, I, I want to make clear, I'm not opposed to the Kekku Nation's casino. A rising tide lifts all boats, and I think it's an opportunity for, for Rural Water District number three, if not them, then the city. It creates jobs, it brings revenue and entertainment and tourism, which I think is, you know, the future of Shawnee is very strongly towards tourism. And I, I think that it helps that, and I'm in no way opposed to that. The saturation of the market is, is certainly a concern, but competition's good.
You stood up before to try to explain to us what the process is for notification, and you said, you weren't at the microphone, but you said that all that we're required to do is post a notice in the, in the newspaper-
Right.
Twice? Or just once?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me. I, I know, this was posted now several months ago, and so, at the time, we, we followed ordinance, and I can verify that, and I provide you those publication dates at the next, if you choose to continue this. But, it's different than the requirements for like a rezon, for example. With a rezon, of course, we, we post a sign on the property, we notify adjacent property owners, and we're not required to do that with, with annexations.
And basically, these days, since the, since the change in the law is the only, I don't want to say the only way, but the only way that property can be annexed is at the request of the landowner.
It's, it's very difficult to, to do, to do it otherwise.
Right. And, so that's where we are, with the landowner requesting, still, I guess, since there is an MOU that's going around requesting to be annexed into the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And just to Joanne's point, just to be clear, regardless of whether we should annex this ground or not, the casinos still could or may be built.
Even if the property was not in, in Shawnee city limits, yes, sir, as trust land, certainly they could, they could construct a casino. Obviously, they have, as Chairman noted, there are two different ways that they could obtain water, through the Rural Water District or through the city of Shawnee. Sewer is a little bit more difficult. We believe we're the only sewer provider in the area. So, absent an annexation, they would either have to enter into contract with us for sewer or provide, you know, an onsite sewer system.
And, and I would say that, that the tribe, as well as the city, are both aware of the issues that Chairman Barrett has raised, and that's one reason that this has taken a while, is they've had to explore which is a better option for them, we've had to explore which is a better option for us. If we do not cross-deputize and have compact and all those things, we won't be sending officers, police officers on at all, just as we don't send them on other trust land.
And that's been part of the discussions between the city and the, and the tribe, is actually what services can be provided, whether we're talking police and fire or water and sewer, I mean, all of those things.
Or some combination thereof, and what they want to do about city water versus water district. And it, it may be that we end up not annexing, but contracting with them to provide services. But, right now, they still want to be annexed, and so, we're exploring all these things through memory and understanding. And, and we, we do recognize the needs for various approvals.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any other questions of staff? Entertained a motion.
Move to defer to the sixth, February sixth.
Second.
A motion to defer the public hearing to February sixth by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Collier?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Heron?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winringa?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries?
So, we will defer this public meeting until February, I mean, public hearing to February sixth. Okay. Item number seven. A public hearing in consideration of an ordinance rezoning property located at the northwest corner of Bryan Street and Forty-Fifth Street from A-1 Agricultural to C-2 Suburban Office. Applicant requested C-3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation, however, Planning Commission denied C-3 and approved the C-2. Case number P-01-12, applicant Landys Engineering LLC. I'll open the public hearing. Justin, do you want to give us a staff report on how we ended up at C-2?
I'd be happy to. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review staff report and the planning commission's recommendation. You'll note in the staff report that staff did recommend approval of the applicant's request to a C-3 designation. Staff based that recommendation on the fact that the property is zoned, excuse me, is designated in the city's comprehensive plan for high-intensity commercial compatible with the C-3 designation. The applicant is proposing a church on the property, however, that church would occupy only a portion of the property, and then it's my understanding he would, he wishes to develop it in a commercial manner, the remaining portion of that property. However, he has no immediate plans to do that at this time, so the first order of business would be construction of the church building. The planning commission was concerned that the plans for commercial were not well-specified because they're just conceptual at this time. And so, they were cautious to recommend a rezon to a high-intensity use without knowing exactly what, what might be constructed there. And so, what they did instead was forward your recommendation of C-2, which allows for office uses, which they felt were more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood at this time. They certainly didn't want to preclude the potential for commercial use in the future, but I think that they felt at this time that C-2 was more appropriate. And so, that's where we're at. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
So, at any future date that he wants to change this from C-2 to C-3, say that Bryan Street gets extended on, and he wants, he'll have to come back and-
Yes, sir.
-rezon it. Because he could have built a church in A-1 anyhow, couldn't he? I told him.
He could, he could, yes, sir. The applicant could, could build it. The property's currently zoned A-1 Agricultural, and it could, under our zoning regulations, the church is permissible use.
And how much land is, is there a requirement for the use of development on A-1 versus the use of development on, say, a C-2?
A, a commercial district allows for a much smaller lot size. The A-1 zone requires five acres as a minimum size, and with our commercial designations, you can get down to about 6,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay. Just to understand that. And the, the item, excuse me, is worded to consider C-2 because that's what the planning recommendation that came to us. That's why it got changed from the original C-3 request?
What we have historically done is convey the planning commission recommendation. And so, you know, obviously, staff did in the report recommend C-3. My understanding, the applicant still would like a C-3 designation. I do feel, though, that C-2 is also justifiable as well.
Okay. Any other questions while you have Justin right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this?
I'd like to.
Certainly. Come up and tell us for the record who you are.
Mike Massey. I'm the owner of the property, and I'd like you to consider the C-2 zoning request as originally applied for. In the hearing of the committee last week-
You mean, C-3 that was originally applied?
C-3, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
The, in the original hearing last week, there were three people that stood, there were three concerns that were expressed, but after they were expressed, we didn't have an opportunity to address them. And so, there, the three concerns were trash, flooding, and trees. The trash belongs to the previous owner, and he's got a timeframe to get rid of that. Sooner would be better. The flooding issues will be addressed as we design. We have to have flood retention. We don't have flood issues on that property. The guy downhill has major flood problems, but that does not, we don't affect him, nor does he affect us. Trees, most of the trees they were concerned about aren't even on my property. Mine's been cleared. I asked for a C-3 designation for five reasons. One, it would allow us for an infrastructure for future development. When we have to bore under the street, we need to know how much water to bring over. We're going to bring sewer from up down the hill. Also, it's consistent with the master plan of the city. Thirdly, there were no written protests, and really, the verbal protests weren't so much protest as they were questions. Fourthly, the staff recommended approval. And finally, it might seem incidental, but Christian bookstore you can't have in a C-2. You have to have a C-3, according to your zoning. So, I respectfully ask that you'd consider a C-3 to zone.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. You just thought you were here for one item.
I live on the other side of the tracks and have C-3 zoned commercial property on Forty-Fifth Street. The, the nature of that intersection will certainly change, and that is a primarily residential area. There is a law office that was there, Canada Enzo's office that was there, and a vet's office, I believe, of the two commercials. The rest of that is residential, except for the school. It's, unless Forty-Fifth is going to develop the way unzoned MacArthur East, Bryan did, I, I hope there is some consideration about whether that zoning extends down Bryan South, because I believe that's primarily residential area. If there's going to C-3 zone everything from Harrison to Bryan, which, if there's a contiguous C-2 or C-3, I'm pretty sure you get it if you're contiguous to a property, that's going to change the nature of that neighborhood substantially.
Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing.
Question for Justin. What, actually, what is, C-3 just opens it up for any kind of commercial? Is that what it is?
It, it does, and we have about a fourteen-page use table in the code, so without going through that item by item, just in general, a C-2 is primarily Monday through Friday, eight to five, office-type use that's very, very compatible with residential.
Say, C-2 or C-3? I'm sorry.
C-2, sir. And then a C-3 would, would be, you know, potentially as intense as a 24/7 retail operation.
I know that you stated in here that part of your recommendation is because the comprehensive plan says that that area is, is appropriate for C-3 zoning. I'd have to say that ten years ago, when that plan was written, that that area wasn't as heavy residential as it is now. And there was beginnings of residential there, but since then, we've done some things. Even, there's a residential development, development further to the west that initially had commercial on the frontage property as part of, part of its zoning or its PUD, and we've gone back, and that is now residential. So, it seems like residential has encroached in that area over the last ten years, or eight or nine, or whenever the comprehensive plan went into place. I was present at the planning commission meeting, and there, there was discussion about these things, but I think that a lot of the discussion, too, was just about the intensity, what C-3 means for intensity in that area. And the fact that a church can be built right now on, on A-1, there doesn't need to be. But, understanding that someone has a larger piece of property and would like to plan for their development, you know, what, what can be in there, I think that was part of the request. I personally am very hesitant in having that intersection turn into high-intensity commercial development, big, just because of the way that it has grown in recent years toward, more toward residential instead of commercial. I know that the Bryan Street expansion could, could change some of that, but some of that could be north of that area, too, maybe not right at this intersection. It's a big decision right now. Any thoughts or questions for staff?
My thought on it was that, of course, if, if and when Bryan Street exit, it becomes a reality, then that's going to change the complexity of Bryan Street for probably more than just one mile. And more especially on the, probably on the east side, where there's already some commercial. But, it sure enough will, that first mile. And a lot I hate to do is have a guy spend money when he could have had church without doing anything. I mean, he's got ten acres, so he could have had, built a church without asking to be rezoned or anything else. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
But, I, you know, like, I hate to second-guess the planning commission, and, I mean, they're, that's their job and the job to make a recommendation, so I'd hate to go against them, because I, on the other hand, I'd hate, five years from now, when that gets open, that he comes back and it'll be automatically zoned C-3. There won't be any big questions or anything else about it.
I'd like to respond to the question, you can put a church, but if it's agriculture, you must have at least five acres?
Yes, ten.
I know, but you have to dedicate all, all of it. They don't need but two, two and a half.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I understand.
You have to zone one way or the other, or you have to designate all of it as a church. And that's what it would be.
I'm sorry, yes.
So, was that a motion?
No, because I hate to see, you know, that area not developed, because the one they did- No, because I hate to see, you know, that area not develop, because the one these days it's going to develop, and then we'll be going through all through this again. You and I probably won't, but somebody will.
You've got 15 on me, that's not fair. Well, I would move to approve the planning commission's recommendation of C2.
Do you have a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation from Commissioner Sims?
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winterreger?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. C2. Okay. Let me get back to the agenda. Item number eight. A public hearing in consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit in C3 automotive, commercial, and recreation zoning for property located at 1613 North Harrison. Case number P02-12, applicant Carl McCollum. And I'll open the public hearing.
Evening, ladies mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, and guests. My name is Carl McCollum. I am the representative, guest that says applicant, which I've had many phone calls wanting to know if I'm going to be opening up a Boom Boom Room or not, and I'm not. But I am the on-site property management for the strip mall, for South Star Property Management. So also, on behalf of them, I'm going to be the contractor fixing this for them, but also on behalf of South Star Property Management. We've already rented the space to the two ladies that we know as Lisa and Linda, and I can't pronounce their names because of Chinese, and I don't want to humiliate myself and degrade them. They've came here from California, wanted to open up a massage place here, started a home here, and now they're wanting to do another one also somewhere here in Shawnee. She respectfully did not understand about the permit. She thought permit $25, that's all she need. No. She wasn't aware of how we had to have it zoned and send letters out to everybody. And so, right now, she is upset in California until she finds out what's going to happen tonight. So on behalf of South Star, we would very much like to have her here and open this up for a massage. It's not going to be anything special, no Boom Boom Rooms or nothing else flashing red lights. Strictly massage therapeutic.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Do you want to hear from Justin? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Justin, is this going to be in front of the existing? Is that what we're talking about?
It's just part of the existing shopping center.
Oh, it's just part of the existing?
Yeah, it's a small lease space within there. And the initial use permit applies just to that lease space. It's not cart launch approval for the whole.
I'm dying to ask if the master plan includes a definition of Boom Boom Room.
So this area really is already C3? This is just a conditional use for the purpose?
It really is, yes.
That's right.
Were there any restrictions or recommendations on that?
No, there's not.
There's two conditions, but...
Standard permits required by local and state.
I'd move to approve subject to the two conditions.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the rezoning contingent on the two conditions from Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Smith. Any other comments? Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winterreger?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number nine. A public hearing in consideration of an ordinance rezoning property located at 4410 and 4440 North Kickapoo from R1, single-family residential, and C1, neighborhood commercial, to C3, automotive, commercial, and recreation. Case number P03-12, applicant Peter Porter. And I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this?
You want to hear it?
Yeah.
Mayor Peterson, commissioners, my name is Peter Porter, Shawnee, Oklahoma, and it's certainly good to be with you this evening. I'm appearing on behalf of the two applicants, Philip and Cynthia Nguyen, my Asian friends, who are presently in their home country observing the New Year. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about this application, but I could tell you upfront that their plan is to have me build them a 6,000-square-foot retail facility, of which they want to use about 3,500 feet or 4,000 feet for another nail salon. They presently have the nail salon at Walmart. They have one in Midwest City at the Town Center Complex, and they want to anchor this thing with their nail salon. They have some feelers out from telephone companies, Coffee House, and some others to fill up the rest of it, but that's basically what we're asking for. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. If anyone else wished to speak to this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions? Any staff report? Any motions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve the rezoning by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Is that correct? Okay. Call roll, please.
Collier?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winterreger?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 10. A public hearing in consideration of an ordinance modifying Section 3-216 of the Shawnee Municipal Code to prohibit non-acessory type signs. Open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address this topic this evening, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Steph's done a great job of researching and providing information, as you see in your packets. I thought I'd highlight some of the issues regarding off-premise signage. In August of 2001, the city commissioner's issued a moratorium. A year later, they reaffirmed that moratorium in August 2002. In November 2011, the city commissioner referred it back to the planning commission for a recommendation. On February 17th, the planning commission recommended to repeal Section 3-216 of the city code prohibiting off-site advertising. We concur with the planning commission's recommendation, and we've prepared an ordinance to that effect in your packets this evening, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Okay, does anyone wish to speak to this?
I'm Phil Tomlinson, Five Quail Ridge, Shawnee, Oklahoma. You know, there's a reason that the moratorium was placed, of course, and it was, I think, as I recall, because the public was becoming concerned about the proliferation of additional signage within the city limits, which is, of course, a different issue than the proliferation of billboards on the interstate system. I can't imagine that even though it places some burden on the various property owners that they're not able to increase revenue by renting or leasing these signs to people that might want to advertise on them, I just, I can't imagine that the public would not much prefer that we keep the community a little tidier and not get to where we're looking like Dell City, which allows these. And if you've been over there, you can see that it really does create a lot of unsightiness. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wished to speak to this?
I'm Nancy Ford, and I live here in Shawnee. And I've been on the city and the chamber beautification committees when this first came up. And the passage of this originally followed kind of a flurry of billboards being put up all over town, and I think that's why people ask the city to limit that. And to, right now, we have several billboards that are empty, so I think people have an opportunity to get their message out if they need to, and I would urge you not to allow additional billboards inside the city limits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, commissioners, my name is David Romberg. I represent the Romberg Family Trust. One of our businesses is the billboard business. And many of the people in this room are instrumental in helping this family billboard business start right here in Oklahoma. My mom and dad started it about 30 years ago, and my family's lived in Potawatomi County for over 100 years. Before, you just blanketly say no to billboards, I want to let you know that they are extremely beneficial to a community, more than beneficial. They're absolutely vital. Every day, you've got 30,000 cars going down I-40. We want those people and that business to stop in Shawnee. The billboards that we have in Shawnee in the city areas, in what we call the intercity, those billboards stay rented 90% to 100%, and there's usually a waiting list. They are key to businesses. They are essential to their survival. People that have these businesses, they may not be able to make their house payments. Billboards can be compatible with the city. I know that we can't put one up every few feet, and I know that they have to meet the requirements of the planning commission, and they have to be looked at closely. But they play an essential part more now than they ever have before. And I just wanted to make you aware of that before you just say no to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Tom Terry, and I also was a part of the original recommendation to have a moratorium on billboards. And as I understand it, this moratorium only deals inside the city limits. It does not affect anything on I-40. There seems to be plenty of billboards, in my opinion. I know of several that are blank almost all the time, and if they're not blank, they have the paper tear torn down off of them, something like that. I hate to see us put more billboards in when we're not renting all that are available. And also, I think that they are a major distraction. If you're driving down Harrison Street looking for a business, you're looking at this business signs, but if you've got a billboard in front of you, you may see it and not the car in front of you and hit it. So I urge you to vote against releasing the moratorium.
Anyone else?
My name is Linda Malli, and I'm a resident of Shawnee, and I am very opposed to any more of these signs. As a member of the beautification committee, it appears to me that we would be neglecting our duty to erect any further signs in this town. Have you ridden, driven down Harrison or Kickapoo lately? Sometime do it, and do it seriously, and you'll understand why we would like to forget any further signs in this town. Thank you.
Would you sign in, please? Oh, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Any questions of staff?
Well, I just, because I have been in the process of being involved in trying to rent some of these signs, and I know, for example, that some of them you have to wait, have to plan two, three years ahead of time. It depends on the location. The ones that are in extremely high-traffic locations are those that you have to stand and wait for. Is that not correct, mister? So, you know, I know that they are, in some cases, you know, determined in the traffic, maybe not as pretty as they should be, but they're also informational. And I hate to see us, we've kind of created ourselves a problem here with how many we have inside the city limits. Those are, you know, like I said, we're people standing in line trying to get to rent those signs a year or two ahead of time. If you're a politician planning on loan for a state or some other office, then you have to plan ahead of time at least two or three years. So, and I've, you know, I've been involved in that. I think that the planning commission could come up with some rules and regulations, much more strict, and control the signage, and then the planning commission could bring back some rules and regulations to us rather than us this comp block, cart block, they're saying we're not going to have anymore, because that's actually a way of freedom of speech. And I'm all a opponent of that, so I'd like to see the planning commission adopt, take another look at the, look at the ordinances and adopt a restrictive ordinance or something that we could move on with. Not put that on a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Harrod and a second by Commissioner Sims to request of the planning commission to review the possibilities of allowing billboards under a more restrictive condition.
Specifically with relation to the, excuse me, difficult to construct or narrowly permitted the communities of Midwest City more in Norman.
Okay.
Now, I have, I'd like to have some feedback in this same presentation. Obviously, the existing signs would be grandfathered in, well...
It would just depend on exactly what format you approved an ordinance in, the ordinance in your packet. Yes, sir, it would grandfather the existing signs.
In the event they rot or get hit by lightning or a tornado, they cannot be replaced? Is that...
Our not-conforming section allows for maintenance, but you're right, if there's a complete catastrophe like a tornado that would completely wipe it out, it would not permit rebuilding.
What if they're not taken care of? What if they're...
What if they're fallen?
If they're just fallen to neglect, then eventually, if they're, it's such a state of disrepair where it's not maintenance, it would be completely as if it were new, as if you were installing a new one, then it would not be grandfathered in. No, sir?
We could put a lien on it and tear it down, or ask the owner to take care of it?
We have removed signs before. We have done that.
We had no rules in place at all for billboards at this time?
What we have in place right now is a moratorium which suspends the section 3-216 in the code. So previously, if you were just simply to remove the moratorium, that section would go back into place. And I would characterize this as allowing billboards fairly freely.
Well, that's not what I would, my saying is restricted, you know, like some of the examples you gave in, you know, the notes from other cities to try to restrict it, rather than just open it up. I'm not for that.
Is it possible to do it like a conditional use, where we look at every single, individually? Because I've noticed there were a lot of times, like to get to Arcadia, when they had one that was blocking a historic site because of the placement. There's going to be cases like that, case by case, it's going to make a big difference, not only just by size.
I would think if, as long as you didn't regulate the content of the sign, I would think that you, that could probably work out. We'd have to discuss it with.
But Commissioners, I don't think you want to hear every request for every billboard that comes into the community. I think what we need to do is study this from a corridor planning standpoint, where we look at where it's appropriate. I live on Broadway. I don't want to see any billboards on Broadway. I don't think Commissioners want to see any billboards on Broadway, so we would not want to do that. We can stick to arterial streets, residential collectors, and things of that nature that cause there to be a lot of high traffic on them, that potentially there could be a need for a sign. But I really would caution Commissioners in wanting to, you know, approve each individual one. I think you get into content, which has clearly been ruled by the courts courts, I'm getting into our city attorney's business, but let us take a look at it and come up with a recommendation. We can certainly handle nonconforming uses, either less restrictively or more restrictively, depending on how the commission would like to look at them. Typically, just like a structure, any structure, if there's more than 50 percent of the damage that's actually occurred to the billboard, you know, it's considered that it'd be a new billboard. So we need to take a look at the existing inventory that we have, find out how many we have, where they're located, what size they are. I think we need to identify them. If you're going to regulate them, we need to put a sticker on them and say that they've been inspected by the city. I mean, there are a whole host of things. This is a little bit more complicated, I think, than just saying, you know, and I appreciate the commission's request for us to go back and take a look at them and regulate them.
Maybe not knowing what your recommendation would be, I mean, I am not for the proliferation of billboards. And I don't know what we're going to be able to accept that would be allowable without maybe every single one coming before us. And maybe you're more creative, and maybe, you know, end up having to look at that. But until I know what those requirements are, and then get those requirements in my mind, and start driving the city to see what the potential are, because if it's not, if it's, you have to have a spot this big, and it can be this tall, and as long as you've got it, and you're on an arterial, it can be 10 in a row or 20 in a row, because every single one of them meets. I'm just, I have some concern about being able to tie it down, so that we don't have billboards every 10 feet. I'm just.
I think it's just the delicate balance between supporting businesses and allowing them to advertise, which brings in tax dollars, which our community needs in order to operate, versus the appearance of our community and the quality of life. So.
On I-40, is the separation 500 feet or 1,000 feet? Or I think there's rules that ODOT has that they're separated.
I don't know.
I don't know the specific rules. I know that they're, they are regulated, but I don't know the rules, sir.
But in fact, some of those are inside city limits.
Some of those are certainly within city limits on I-40, but they're probably within the ODOT property, ODOT right-of-way, so they're not regulated by the city.
Some are grandfathered.
And some are grandfathered.
Carol, what a question.
Okay. Let me, I want a question. We have a motion on the floor. Should that pass? Is a moratorium still in place?
Sure.
I believe it is.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
I'm not, I want to, I want to hear that motion again, please.
Yeah. Clarify it for him, please. I was trying to restate.
I just make more restrictive, not just an open.
Okay. I have motion to request planning commission to come back with policy allowing, and that's as far as I got when we started talking.
Some type of policy or ordinance allowing billboards on there on a restricted basis.
On a restricted basis. Okay. I just want to make sure I got it right.
That's right. Thank you.
Ready to call roll?
Ready.
Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
No.
Collier?
Aye.
Winterrean?
Aye.
Smith? Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We will move on to item number 11. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on recommendation from Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority to award bid for electrical improvements at Heart of Oklahoma Exposition Center and method of payment from loan proceeds. And I believe along with this item on our agenda is also something that was, is at our desk or table here. Whose is this?
Madam Mayor, I believe Mike Jackson's in the audience. Is that the agenda tomorrow?
Yeah. Want to flip here? There's a lot of information in our packets. Thank you very much, I believe. I initially had some questions about bid specifications, the fact that the work or the plan was engineered, professionally engineered. And I think the opportunity, that just a question that everyone had the opportunity to bid on the same requirements, and everyone, all the contractors or potential understood the requirements. I think I've had my questions answered through all the documents that you provided to us, but I don't know if anyone else has any other questions on this. Also, I had asked Brian and Cindy, or Cindy and Brian, to provide us with information on the amount that the city borrowed for a taxable bond, so that we can begin to look at how much money we have available and what the, what the projects are coming in at, what we have already authorized. So I think this gives us a good picture here, too, that the approval of this and where that, you know, where that positions us for the ability to do other projects, additional projects. Any questions, comments?
I just had one question. Who actually grew up to spec for the job? I couldn't find it in there.
It was kind of, we kind of went back to the specs of the RV park that was built in 89, and kind of went off the specs off it, and plus notified certain engineer, different engineers and stuff, and kind of got recommendation from them on drawing up the specs.
Who did the specs in 89?
I think it was Crawford, or it may have been Bass. I think it was Bass, yeah.
There's a substantial difference between the two bids that were received.
Substantial amount of material difference.
Right.
Is that copper versus aluminum?
Yes.
But what, is there any, just for my own notification, is there, OGNES delivering electricity to us at the expo in, on aluminum? Is there any reason not to consider that? I mean, when we're talking about dollars and cents?
Yeah, I wouldn't consider aluminum under any condition. That's because of the, my experience with it. You have a nick or rough place or break in the aluminum wire, and it oxidizes, and when you get back to try to find it, then you can't find it because it doesn't build up heat or anything else. You don't have that problem with aluminum, because it doesn't, I mean, with copper, because it doesn't oxidize it. And even if it's in the jacket, like a URD is direct burial, it's in a jacket, it may have been damaged or something in manufacturing. So it may take 10 years for it to show up, more special than a four-oh wire. So you come along here, and you've done your parking lot, or you've asphalted, or you've concrete, created, or you've gravelled the area, and here you've got six or eight pedestals down, and you have to go through there and try to figure out where it lost power and where it's, where it is short of that. So you start at one end of it, dig to the other end, and it's a major problem. I don't, most electricians that I'm familiar with won't use aluminum at all for that reason. If you put up a material bond and a, and a performance bond, and you're bonding that material to be good, then I don't want to, you know, personally, I wouldn't want to come back and have to, five years later, 10 years later, go out there to go excavating and try to find a short in it.
But that would be covered by a performance?
No, it's once that year's over with, that's it. You're on your own. Another thing that the, and I called Mike Cox, I was out there when they opened the bids, I reviewed the bid specifications, I reviewed the drawings, and I've also reviewed the certified drawings that have been submitted. And I pointed out to Mike immediately that there's no disconnecting mains from a CT can to the pedestals, and there should have been some kind of disconnecting mains. You hook a pedestal directly up through the CT cans, you could lose either 16 or 18 or 20, however how many pedestals are tied to that CT can. Now, the only way you can get them shut off is call OGNES, and they shut the power off to the transformer, and then you can work on them. And then when you get it fixed, you have OGNES come back and turn it back on, and then you've got all of your pedestals up. Now, that length of time may be eight or 10 or 12 hours, so you got 15, 20, 16, whatever it happened to be, RVs out there without any power in that length of time. So it's just not a good, it's just not a good design.
Other than the rodeo, when are we capacity out there in these 284 slots?
A lot of times during RV rallies, and that's what, that's what our goal is, is to go more after the RV business. I mean, I have, we have one that we have every year in April that's beyond capacity. Already several booked for this year, plus one in September, that'll be 600 to 800.
Not including the rodeo, Mike, I think there's about six events, six major events with RVs that we have out there, and trying to get more.
We, that's why we went for the 100 percent demand factor. Whenever they, whenever they plug in, you're going to get a true 50 out of it, and that's also, OGNES is doing the 100 percent on their stuff.
Whereas when OGNES runs aluminum wire from their service to a transformer, for example, that's all in conduit.
Yeah, that's a direct barrel.
And it's not direct barrel, it's in conduit, so that if any of that goes bad, then that conduit, they just pull it out and replace it.
But I'm saying that's direct barrel throughout the park.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, there was other reasonings in the specs because of accepting the other bid by just the aluminum versus copper wire, with the switch legs and not tying back in other services that was in there, not, you know, not including OGNES cost in there and everything. There was other, there's other meanings of it.
When the board let the bids, both contractors were there and were allowed to question, and the board, expo board questioned them, and not included in that bid was the work required. You know, they didn't figure the work that they were, OGNES would require them to do to hook up to the transformer.
What was our estimate?
18 months ago, the estimate was at like 550,000 for this project.
Yes, I mean, we are where we are, but I guess my frustration is we had two bidders, and I don't know whether that was because it was a design build or...
Yes, it was.
And that's what this was, and we've had conversations about that internally, and, you know, it's not providing the greatest results for us. So, you know, in this case, it was a design build, yes, sir.
Well, I, city manager, I've talked about it. If it's a project at a certain level, then we need to have, you know, an electrical engineer or so forth. But with the way this worked out, by not having time to do that, you're talking about, you know, 30 days hiring engineer, 30 days at a minimum for him to do the drawings, and then 30 days bid, and then when you open the bids, 10 or 15 days for them to provide their contracts and bonds and so forth. And then I called two suppliers that I've worked with or used to work with, and they told me that the disconnects in the pad, I mean, in the pedestals and so forth were on a eight to 10 weeks, so that's 40 or 50 more days. So it's just impossible, you know, to get this done by, I think the deadline's what, July something.
July.
Yeah. By the time the rodeo comes around, so.
And that eluded all their drawings from their plans and everything else will be signed off by a licensed engineer.
They have to use a licensed electrical engineer on their plans.
So there's no RV rallies prior to the...
Yes, there are several RV rallies prior to the rally.
They're not going.
We'll work in phases of it, of, we won't completely shut everything down. We'll have to work in phases to get, to be able to still have RV rallies yet.
And the existing, John, the existing service will remain in place while they upgrade the service out there, so none of our spots will be without it. But I must share that some of the biggest frustration with the expo staff is, is we've had RV rallies saying, if you don't, we're not coming back. If you don't, you know, I mean, during the rodeo, when it's hot out there, I mean, that is some of the largest complaints that they have about the service we provide out there.
Well, hence my question about a PE signature, or confirmation, or stamp, or whatever, too. I mean, we didn't have a chance to build, to design this ourselves, therefore we went out as a design build, whether that was cost-effective or something, I don't know. I just want to make sure that it was still done properly and legally as we move forward.
Yes. Everybody received the same specs, everybody received the same addendum, everybody received everything that they were supposed to, just like, I mean, through email, response from them, that they received them and everything.
I did make a couple of contacts on companies that we had, that I've bid against when I was in business, but anyhow, they told me one of the major problems is, is finding electricians, because they've, you know, and slowed the last year or so, so they've laid off, you know, apprentice and journeymen, and now Devon Tower's going on, and they've got over 100 journeymen at Devon Tower, and they're advertising in a paper every day for additional journeyman and different, additional apprentice. So that's taken a big hunk out of the workforce, and most companies are, have downsized because of the economy, and they don't have the, mean to do the, do the job. That's why we didn't have any more bids than we had.
I was doing pretty good on this, and then I talked to somebody else, and then I go back the other side. Then Billy and I went to a home builders meeting. Mike Cox gets up there and says, well, aluminum wires, not the same aluminum wire they use for the whole boat.
That's exactly right.
Once again, you know, go again. I, I think I've made his mind up on this, and he's quite, in fact, I, Justin, can you help me with this at all? Is the aluminum wiring that they're using now, a lot different molecules or different structure inside the aluminum itself to where it's, some of this, these problems that we've had before don't exist or are greatly reduced?
I can't really speak to the specifications of it. Commissioner Harrod probably has a better understanding of it than I do. But the aluminum wiring, it does, it does, uh, it does meet code. However, as Commissioner Harrod noted, there's, there's other, uh, benefits to, to copper that's something you may wanna consider.
Although, no matter what the, no matter what the makeup of it is, it still oxidizes, and it still shorts out. I mean, O G and E, I ran into this thirty years ago when I tried to use aluminum wire from a meter base to the, to a panel, and they wouldn't hook it up. They ran aluminum up there, but they wouldn't hook it up because I used aluminum on the other side of it, so. But again, on my own personal property, which I've run thousands of feet of wire from my barn to the gate and everywhere else, I've never used a piece of aluminum, I mean, never used a piece of aluminum because I don't wanna have to worry about it replacing it, throwing it out on, you know, kind of the top or, you know.
The current part right now is, is spec, was spec'd in, in copper wire, and that's what's in there right now.
I basically am just in back and forth, back and forth. I don't wanna save the money, but I wanna do it right.
And, um, and I have sat here, um, trying to decide in years past when it's a technical decision, and, um, none of, none of us usually have that kind of experience, and that's why we rely on those that do and the designers that do and the, and the engineers. That's all I can say, is that those that design it and those that stamp it are the ones that have to approve those kinds of things, and, um, if they do, and, and this is gonna work, then I'm okay with it without having to second guess the engineering of it.
So you're saying if an engineer would sign on on aluminum, you'd feel comfortable as if one signed off on copper?
We're actually past that point because the guy that, personable that bid the aluminum didn't meet the specifications. Number one, he didn't include the price of connection with O G and E. Number two, he didn't make the, uh, specifications of connecting to the other buildings and the light pole and so forth out front. And number three, he didn't provide any disconnecting means. So there's three examples right there that he didn't meet the specifications.
And don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm just bringing this all up. Uh, we didn't ask for the disconnects, either.
Yes, we did.
Yes, they are spec'd in there.
I like that. That's, if I understand that. If one goes out, it's like Christmas lights. You gotta get it on my...
That was part of the addendums that we sent out to everybody.
If you got six strings, Christmas lights, and the first one burns out, all of them go out. That's why that is. All of them go out.
I do like that, but I didn't realize it was part of the specs.
Yes.
And, and so the other bidder did not sign in there, is that correct?
Correct.
I would move to approve, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd move to approve the recommendation from the S C C D A on the electrical improvements at the expo.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Sims to approve the S C C D A's recommendation to approve this contractor. And a second by Commissioner Harrod. Is that what the agenda says that we... Do we need to specify, or did the S C C D A specify why they were accepting that bid?
Add a list in there.
Based on, okay?
Only bid that meets specifications.
Right, they don't, right.
Yes.
That's exactly what I read in the letter. Okay, based on the fact that it was the only bid that meet specifications. Did it? Okay. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And does this take care of method of payment?
No.
Do we need to have that kind of discussion?
Well, I, I think the, the, I'm not sure what the city manager and the finance director particularly want, but question is, um, are you gonna transfer, um, whatever that number is, six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six? Are you gonna pay the bills as they come due? Are you gonna...
I think my, and the mayor's discussion, that she'd prefer that, uh, that we pay the...
Pay the bills as they come due?
Yeah.
Up to a total of six seventeen, seven thirty-six?
Yeah.
For this project?
Probably need a motion to that effect, because the city's not really the contractor, the, um, S C C D A is the on the contract document.
Okay.
You have a...
I have a motion by Commissioner Sims, and I heard a second by Commissioner Harrod. Any other questions on that? Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod? Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, that's all from that item. Okay. Item number twelve, acknowledged sales tax report received January twenty-twelve.
Um, January sales tax, um, receipts were not as high as I anticipated, but we were fourteen thousand dollars over last year. And over two thousand and eight, which when, if you remember the time, that's when our, the economy turned, we're up a hundred and fifty thousand, so. Um, but overall, for sales tax, we're still hovering around two percent below the budget amount. So we're pretty much flat from last year.
As far as sales tax projections.
Correct.
Okay.
But overall, revenues are right on target.
Other revenues, we're making it for it. Okay, all right. Shop Shawnee. Item number thirteen, consider an ordinance, consider an ordinance amending municipal code regarding setting daily and annual fishing license fees at Shawnee Twin Lakes numbers one and two. This is really just an ordinance saying that we're gonna have resolutions instead of ordinances about this.
Well, and then the resolution increases it. The, um, get accustomed to this model. As we amend the, and recodify this year, um, it, it's going to be, um, my recommendation, and I've already made this recommendation to the city manager, and he concurs, that anytime the code book says that the mayor and commissioners set a fee and then sets it, if you want to amend it, we have to do an ordinance, we have to publish, we have to have an amendment to the code, and we're spending money we don't need to spend, particularly now that everybody gets their code online. So we're going to replace all those set by ordinance fees with a provision that the fee will be set by resolution of the mayor and city commissioners, and then, once a year, once every three years, however often, that the city manager wants fees reviewed, he can bring them in to you, and you can do one massive resolution if you want to. So since this needed to be done before the summer, uh, we went ahead and did it that way when, uh, Mr. Bryce came in and asked for it. So there is an ordinance changing, um, the annual fishing license fee, and the only change is that it's set by the mayor and commission, and also one for the hunting, and then there is the actual resolution, which does provide some minimal, uh, increase. Uh, we still have ahead of us, I think, one for maybe boating and some other things, uh, some of those we may go ahead and do before summer. Some we may wait.
So that will be set basically just by a schedule of fees that will be reviewed annually or moved to approve.
Okay, second. A motion to approve by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Stevens.
You wanna read it? Because we, we zipped right through the zone on ordinances without titles read, so. Uh, this is ordinance number, I don't know what, do we have a number?
There's not one on there.
Repealing and amending section sixteen dash one seventeen A of the Shawnee Municipal Code, providing for the setting of fees for daily and annual fishing licenses for Shawnee Twin Lakes numbers one and two, providing for repeater, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, if I may make a point when, when you let me.
Yes.
We are doing some things around the city to provide better customer service. One of the things that we're doing out at the lake, uh, that this will help fix is, we are doing electronic kiosks. So you don't have to go down to sunny beaches, you don't have to come down to city hall to get your boating, fishing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You have to put a credit card in, pay your fee for the day, pay your annual fee, those types of things, and it's much easier to deal with whole amounts rather than have to deal with quarters. So that kind of precipitated all of this. We're also, um, looking at working with U S payments so that you can make water payments, uh, at homeland, have a kiosk here in city hall that's open twenty-four hours a day, things of those nature, and so you'll see some more of these requests. And as the attorney, city attorney mentioned, you know, we, we feel as though it's best to put those in a schedule of fees, uh, commissioner, so that we don't have to go in each, every, each and every ordinance and open public hearings and all that, so. Thank you for your concurrence.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Here, aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Took a nap.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, consider an ordinance amending municipal code regarding setting daily and annual hunting license fees at Shawnee Twin Lakes numbers one and two.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Smith.
This is an ordinance repealing and amending section sixteen dash one eighty-three A of the Shawnee Municipal Code, providing for the setting of fees for daily and annual hunting licenses on the waters and for city-owned and controlled land surrounding Shawnee Twin Lakes numbers one and two, providing for repeater, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. And did we vote the emergency on the last one, or did...
We did not.
No, we did not.
We'll need to back up in a second to do that. I slipped through that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Emergency clause on this one?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Harrod to approve the emergency clause. Okay. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we need to go back to...
Fishing is the one.
Item number thirteen, emergency clause.
Yeah, moved to approve on fishing.
To approve by Commissioner Sims. Second is by Vice Mayor Collier to approve the emergency clause. Um, call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Uh, Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now, item fifteen, which is the resolution, consider a resolution setting the daily and annual hunting and fishing license fees at Shawnee Twin Lakes numbers one and two, and setting the retail businesses fees for issuing these licenses.
Moved to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Winteringer. You need to read the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moved to approve the emergency clause.
Here's your one.
Don't need to...
Is there one on there?
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Okay. Item number sixteen, ready? Consider bids, sixteen A, Community Center Fire Suppression System Open.
All right. Second time around. We, uh, we did advertise this in a paper, mailed it out to, uh, several companies, and, uh, we got three returns this time.
Man.
Uh, this is budgeted in the budget for eighty thousand. Express Fire Protection Incorporated, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, Simplex Grenelle L P, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. Trans American Fire Sprinklers, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, one hundred and eight thousand and eight hundred dollars. And staff would like to defer to have a chance to look these over.
Okay.
A move. Second.
All right, a motion to, um, approve staff's recommendation by Vice Mayor Collier, second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens? Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, Sidewalk ADA Handicap Ramps Project, various locations, award.
This is our sidewalk and ramp project that we're required to do, to follow behind the streets that we rehab and mill and overlay and that kind of thing. We, actually, my memo says we open bids January third, we actually opened them December nineteenth, and the January meeting was postponed, so that's why we're making a recommendation tonight. Uh, we received four bids, uh, those are tabulated, uh, in your packet or on your desktop. Uh, we've reviewed them, and we would recommend awarding the project to C P Integrated Services in the amount of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred, eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. And this is a, want, uh, you to know that this is a quantities-based contract, a kind of a maintenance-type project. So, uh, we do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted, we will move the contractor around to do as many ramp locations as we can. This also includes the sidewalk on Kennedy Street in front of the high school from, uh, Project Hearts facility up to the heart surface there at the corner. So having said all that, we recommend, uh, awarding it to C P Integrated.
Okay.
Tell me.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier.
John, when you say heart surface, that's bracket?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so...
At the corner.
Okay.
I say heart surface...
A sidewalk.
Well, we'll take sidewalk all the way to that, but if we have money available, you know, left over, we, we'll try to extend it off to the, at least put ramps up at the corner, but...
Okay, but it does get the tennis courts and, and the L five seven, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, back to my agenda. Item seventeen, new business.
Madam Mayor, no, no new business this evening.
Item eighteen, administrative reports.
We do have a couple of administrative reports. Before I invite Chief Franks and, and, uh, James Bryce to come up, I needed to address the commission. At your places is a letter from the Wood, uh, the Oklahoma Veterans Memorial Committee. You know, several years ago, they started an initiative to, to build the, the, uh, memorial there in Woodland Veterans Park. This letter was submitted to us shortly after a meeting that was held between Mayor Peterson and myself and several members of the veterans group. They are asking in this letter for additional dollars to continue the efforts that they've had out there, which, as I've said before, and many of you have commented, that it really is a beautiful facility out there. The trouble is, we need to address this, uh, and their request is for some, some dollars now, and then a total of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars later. You heard from Cindy this evening, our sales tax reports are not coming in very strong. Uh, us finding the dollars during this particular budget cycle, um, I wouldn't advise that for the commission to do that. Uh, and, and also in, in terms of our next budget cycle, we're more than halfway through our budget cycle, and I don't anticipate that we are going to have a strong, uh, budget year next year either, other than some small, uh, increases. You know, I think, I think the, that, yeah, at this point, you know, I know there's been some discussion between commissioners and myself about potentially, uh, allowing some dollars out of our bond issue. Should the voters approve the Woodland Veterans Park improvements with the pools and the splash pads, seventy-five percent of those proceeds would have to be used at the pool, but the hundred and eleven thousand dollars that, that the veterans group is asking for certainly could be used out of that pool of dollars, should the commission see fit to do so. So I think, you know, I mean, if, if, if that's, if that's the commission's recommendation, I can certainly... I can certainly write a letter on the mayor's behalf, and we can respond to the veterans group. We can put this on the agenda for future discussion if commissioners would like to do something different, but I felt like we needed to bring it up and have the conversation.
I certainly concur with not, not pulling out of this year's budget. I don't know what we would give up this year to do this, and while it is a very worthy cause, a request in September during our current budget year is very difficult to, you know, to consider. And I'm sure, based on the results of the election on February 14th, we might have this item come up again. So, you know, should some of those items pass, and then as the bids come in for the projects, and what we legally have to spend on the projects, should there be extra funds, this is certainly a worthwhile project to consider using those funds on. But no, I don't think that we need to have a budget amendment during this year for this right now, I just can't see that. That's just my opinion.
Sound to me like they're asking for it immediately for...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-seven grand.
Yes, sir.
Right. With $111 whenever it comes in or is delivered or...
So do you need action on that?
Can't really take action.
You can't really take action on it, I mean, I think, you know, I think unless there's opposition, I'm going to write a letter back to them, responding to them, and tell them that's, that's what the, that's what the plan is at this point. Certainly if commissioners would like to do something after February 14th, otherwise, just request it be put on the agenda, and we can have those conversations. But I do think that, that the dollars that come out of the bond proceeds would easily be, it would be, you could use those dollars for this particular request. And if that, if that, if that works, then we'll move into our other administrative reports. Madam Mayor, Russ is going to come talk with us about the Hope House.
Oh, yes. Since we had a transfer to you.
And I was asked, evening, I wanted to give you some information, it's already been in, in the newspapers, but some information about the Unser Center. The former program manager worked with the center very well, very pleased with that, they helped us out an awful lot over the years, not only the Shawnee Police Department, but the other entities that use it. Unfortunately, for various reasons, they lost the accreditation, and thus some of the funding became in jeopardy. The District Attorney's Office took over running the Unser Center, and let me back up, the Unser Center is a place where victims of sexual assault or abuse, including children, can be taken and interviewed in a calm, quiet setting. The Unser Center is specifically set up for this purpose away from a hospital or a public area, and it's just more conducive so that these people aren't revictimized again or suffer any more trauma than is necessary. So this, this is a facility that's completely set up for that, the exam room, interview rooms, all the recording equipment that's necessary. That being said, unfortunately, they lost the accreditation, the District Attorney's Office took this over. They were able to write a grant for it, but due to different funding, auditing practices, they were needing somebody else to take over the administrative control over that, so I asked the city manager, and with his blessing, we, we took over that with the help of, of the staff that we have, and that's part of it, is we have a, a great staff and a great infrastructure, and they were able to take on this, so I really appreciate the, the staff and their efforts in this endeavor. So the Unser Center will continue to, to function, not only for us, but all of Pop County, and also assists Seminole, Lincoln, and even Pontotoc Counties, so...
So hence the budget adjustment that we had for that revenue coming in, to be able to go to the Unser Center that we had on our agenda tonight.
So, yes, we did pick up a full-time and a part-time employee, but they are grant, grant-funded, and they also understand that if the grant should go away, their positions would go away. If that doesn't happen, we hope that the funding will continue, that we're, the grant funding process can be handled through the City of Shawnee, so...
Wow.
So, once again, I think the staff, they're the ones doing the work behind the scenes on, on making this happen, very appreciative of all the staff in that.
Good report.
Questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
James is going to come tell us about our Certified Healthy Community Grant Approve, or Approval, and a Certified Healthy Business Approval.
Yes.
Back in November, it was brought to us that we had a chance to fill out an application to certify our community as a healthy community. We did that, and here recently, we received a letter back stating that we did get to the, the basic level, basic incentive. There's two steps further than that, which is a, is a merit and an excellent incentive. Getting this basic incentive also opens up an opportunity to get a grant, and right now, the grant is, is based at $10,000. That $10,000, if we get the grant, will go back into us providing other healthy things to, to boost maybe to the next level of the incentives. Talking with Connie Beffert, who's with the Tobacco Settlement Trust today, she had also mentioned to me, there's a long list of things that need to be provided to this in order for the grant, and depending on how much we can provide, we could also be eligible for a little bit more money in this area. But, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things that have to, yet to come up with on this, so... They've set the, that application date for the, the end of February to have this stuff turned in. It seems like these dates are coming really, really quick.
[laughing]
But I also wanted to say that at the same time this application was turned in, Tammy Johnson, our HR Director, also turned in an application to certify Shawnee as a healthy business, and we did get that also on the basic level, so... Through all this, all the communities and, and businesses that were awarded this year will be honored on March 1st at an awards luncheon at the Cost Convention Center at 11:30. So I will get, try to get that letter out to y'all. But we'll keep you posted on progress from here on out.
Thank you.
Just, just one more note, commissioners, this was, this was initiative of Chris Deal last legislative session, and so we're proud to be his hometown and proud to be taking advantage of, of the grant opportunities.
Right. There's a, many other groups, many other coalitions that helped support this too, as a healthy community, and then also to help other businesses receive that recognition too, so, very good. Very good. Now we're a safe community and a healthy community.
That is all this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item 19, Commissioners Comments. I have one, we talked about sidewalks on Kennedy Street, and I drove that the other night, and there aren't any lights there. Is that something that we request? I don't, I mean, not even any light poles, I wouldn't just say that the lights are out, I don't think there are any lights on that street.
North Kennedy, as in...
Yeah, right in front of the high school.
That entire...
That entire area. I don't know if that's something that, that we request or the school has to request, but it...
You certainly can, the school can, we'd run it through the traffic commission.
Okay. It was very dark there.
And almost at that same point, we've got a lot of lights, I know there's been a lot of discussion, there's a lot of lights out, and I don't know the most expeditions away to identify those and get them fixed, but we need to be moving on.
Yes, sir, OGN E is, is going around town and identifying those. City Engineer's been in contact with the VP of OGN E, and our local representative and I are meeting next week, I believe, to try to do some further.
Well, I noticed they've using some subcontractors to, where some of the poles have been run over by traffic and destroyed, that they're using subcontractors to reinstall those, so OGN E's trying to get the service back on.
Good. Anything else?
What about our yield study, we heard any more on that?
Yes, sir. The staff and myself met with CDM Engineering. The, the study is about 90% done. The hangup is still as it was right before the holidays, which is that we specifically want a policy that management and the city commissioners can follow in times of drought. You know, our, our study has revealed that we have enough water in our three reservoirs all the way through 2060, 50 years, based on our population growth and our industry growth. Of course, we need to reevaluate if, if we had some, some change in that that increased it somehow, or an industry that came in that needed additional water supply. But in the meantime, we met with them right after the holiday, and we're continuing to formulate that. I hope we'll have that back to commissioners here next month. We're working, we're working towards it.
Some guidelines for, for an ordinance or for something so that we can say, you know, what is a drought, what do we need to do, and what are the levels, those kinds of things, that's what you're, that's what we need, yeah.
Again, based on, based on our storage capacity, our engineers are telling us we really don't need those plans. I say, we paid for it, and there will always be a need for that type of drought contingency, so we're trying to get that result from them, and then we'll soon thereafter provide it to the commissioners.
Do I have any information on kids' space or the cost of repair and what it's going to cost us to fix that back or whatever?
The costs really are very, I mean, James can certainly get up and address it. The costs are fairly minimal, believe it or not. We're going to have to close the park in order to rebuild a couple of the structures that are in there. I think James said that the cost of materials was going to be in the neighborhood of about $2,500.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right in around $2,500. We're in the process of picking those materials up now. For the meantime, we, we've got the park cleaned up and, and made sure it was safe enough to open back up till we get everything together, and then we'll watch the weather and get a good week, and we'll have to end up closing that thing down, and, because it's going to take a little bit to, to rebuild those structures and the fence and stuff that were burnt, so...
You guys replaced some of those posts, that was, yeah, that's what I saw.
Several of them.
Yeah.
I, I do want to commend your department, James, they were out there, got that thing cleaned up.
Boy, quickly.
Swiftly, that was awesome, I really appreciate, but, do you have any recommendation, anybody thought about what we could do to make rent this in the future?
Commissioners, there's a technology out that we learned about through some of the different vendors that James and I have been talking to. I may have mentioned this, there's an audible sound that we can have go off out there at dusk and turn off at dawn. For teenagers and kids younger can hear it, but we old folks can't. It's some sort of frequency. Now, it's expensive, it's probably a $4,000 investment, but from what I understand, it, it's a, it's a sound that's emitted that teenagers and young kids, it just drives them nuts. So we're having discussions about that, we realize it's an expensive part to put in there, but...
How about some kind of a security camera or something like that, so we...
We've looked at, security cameras are, are kind of about the same, I mean, we're having those talks now, trying to figure out how we could do that, how we could get the information back to us, wherever we could store it, so...
There's a, I don't know why that'd be suitable or not, but I know there's a, you know, sealed area in that restroom, and I know there's power in that restroom. And, you know, then, whatever you call it, plumbing chase or whatever it is.
Yeah, we've, we've kind of, we've identified that as, as a place where we could, we could possibly put a, a storage device for the video or whatever, so...
With video, that's an option for us, but then we have to transmit that signal via the internet over some sort of communication. That adds another $60 a month to, you know, communicating with it so that we can look at it on our iPads and our computers, but we're considering a couple of different options.
All right, anything else?
Move adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Herod, second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Herod?
Aye.
Winteringer? Smith? Stevens?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will open the Shawnee Municipal Authority Meeting, January 17th, 2012. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Going to have a motion to approve by Commissioner Herod and a second by Commissioner Sims. On the minutes, on the very first section, it has all commissioners listed as being present, and we had two that were not here at that meeting. The rest of the roll call is correct, but in the minutes...
On the SMA minutes?
On the SMA, and actually the airport minutes too.
Okay.
When I look at it, it just has all seven of us, so that, make a recommendation that that gets corrected. So, motion to approve with that correction and a second.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Herod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider bids, 2A, sale and removal of fishing dock and walkways on Shawnee Twin Lake, number two.
All right, this is the second dock over on Lake Number Two that was destroyed or damaged by the tornado that came across there, and we advertised in the paper for this, and we had two come in and pick up a packet. One was Scott Shaded of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for $2,150, and James Martin of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for $850. This cost is, is a cost that they're paying us for, for this, and they have a required time to remove this off of the lake. If it pleases the commission, I would like to go ahead and award this and get the process underway to Scott Shaded for $2,150.
So moved.
All right, a motion by James Herod to approve staff's recommendation to award this to Scott Shaded for $2,150.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims.
Any quick question? You said get it off the lake, but probably it's going to be moved to...
Yes.
Is there any requirement, is that then considered an existing dock and not subject to encapsulated float?
It has encapsulated on that one. Yes.
Okay, solved the problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Herod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 2B, water main break repairs at various locations, award.
It's not even ever going to get to you.
We're working on it.
We received two bids on contractor help, excuse me, on main breaks, one from Craft Rentals Construction Company, one from Central Contracting Services. Staff recommends awarding to both contractors prioritized by price and using both as needed in the event of an emergency.
A move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Two C, sanitary sewer rehab project in various locations with an award recommendation.
After reviewing the bids and checking references, staff would like to recommend awarding the bid to TriStar Utilities Incorporated from Independence, Kansas, for three hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, with the option of adding additional lines to rehab as deemed necessary up to the budgeted amount of five hundred thousand
A move.
All right. A motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, two D, truck-mounted CCTV multi-conductor inspection system deferred from the December nineteenth city commission meeting, so that you could review all three, I believe? Okay.
After presentations from three companies and checking references, staff recommends awarding the bid to Baker Equipment Company for a hundred and nine thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty-six, a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
I move. We accept staff recommendation.
All right, a motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Motion to adjourn?
A move.
By Commissioner Winteringer, seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?